It's 5:30, so we'll call to order this meeting for Monday, February 10th, 2020. Start with a roll call. Carl, can you give us that, please?
Councilmember Remley.
Here.
Ronane, Lunsman.
Here.
Reif.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Bunsonus.
Here.
Olson.
Here.
Rux.
Here.
Mayor Shawman.
Here. Please stand with me for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's start with approving last week's minutes for the meeting of February 3rd, 2020. Can I get a motion to do that, please?
So moved.
Second.
A motion from Johnson and a second from Rux. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed nay, the motion does carry. Next, we've got two open forum signups. The first one to be speaking will be Mr. Mike Summers regarding the BMX fund. So, Mike, if you'd make your way to the podium, make sure there's a green light on in your little speaker there. And Mr. Kyle Oswald, looks like he'll be joining him as well.
Yeah, do you want to handle this? I'm gonna have Kyle give a couple handouts here just to kind of show you what your investment is gonna do for the community here with BMX. I'm sure if you all heard or you haven't heard, August 7th through the 9th of this summer, BMX is gonna be hosting a national BMX race. This is huge. It's gonna bring in anywhere from 800 to 1,000 riders. I think the estimated revenue, was it Kyle, right around 1,001.2 or something like that? So, we're real excited about it. What happened is, we put in for a regional event. We weren't ready for this national yet. We put in it for a regional event. They liked Kyle's proposal so much, they granted us a national event, which really kind of knocked our socks off. So, for that being said, they requested that we had a couple improvements that we needed to do yet. We were able to put in for this event because of the generosity of the community and the generosity of the city to get our capital campaign done. These improvements that they suggested we have, that we needed to do or wanted to see us do, is they wanted to increase our seating from 850 to 1,500. They wanted us to asphalt the second corner on the BMX track, and then they wanted light poles in the parking lot for safety reasons. Like I said, we weren't ready at this point. We wanted to build into this gradually, but when they're gonna offer us something of this magnitude, we're not gonna turn it down. So, what we're coming in for is to request is to see if there's any room in promotional money for an additional $20,000 for these improvements. They have to be done this summer. And if it isn't in your budget, we were gonna ask and see if you could extend and payment 20,000. I think this next one, this year's just the last year. That, I know you guys can't promise ahead, but if we do get approved for this year, this would've been the last one. And if there's a possibility of adding one more, or maybe getting 40,000 this year, or however it would work for your budget. But with these improvements, what we want to do is we want to wow these guys. We want to bring them back, year after year is our goal. This is gonna rival the state bees. It's gonna bring people in that we're not used to, except again, on state bees. Kyle handed out some literature here. It's amazing, the cities that we are included in, that we're a small fry compared to where these guys are being hosted. So, it's pretty impressive what Kyle has built and what he's done. I'm gonna turn the mic over to Kyle and let him talk to this room.
Yeah, first of all, thank you for your commitment to us with our capital campaign. The idea behind the campaign was to bring in big events like this, which obviously we succeeded in doing. I guess urgency, I guess you could say, for needing the money, more money, is, like Mike said, we really weren't expecting to get a national this quick. We kind of thought that they'd kind of give us the stepping stone, which would've been a regional final, kind of test the waters to see, are we able to host, you know, a larger event than we normally have been. So, the shock of them saying, well, we want to just forego that and bring the big show to town, it was like, wow, you know, we really weren't, we were about a year earlier than I was expecting. So, these projects that Mike was talking about were always gonna be on the horizon for us to get done. This just kind of pushed, okay, now we really'd like to have them done before they get here, like he said, to really wow them, to get it to come back. The economic impact that event has, like, it has for the city, the third page in the packet, which was a report done by the Colorado, I can't remember what city it was, in Colorado, Denver might've been, actually. That was done by their convention and visitors bureau to show what kind of impact the race had when it was there in 2016, which, and according to USA BMX, that event will rival what we would expect here. So, if we're getting, you know, over $1 million in revenue just off hosting this one time, I'm happy to say that we're actually getting all the money back to the city that they gave to us for our capital campaign, and then some. And if we can host this thing every year or every other year, obviously, it's just a win for the city. I would also, too, with the promotional funds that we have been receiving, I'm actually really proud of the fact that we use the money exactly what the promotional fund was set up for, which was to help bring events like this to town. It wasn't an operational cost or anything we were coming after. We did utilize this exactly how the promotional fund was meant to be used. So, that, like I said, I'm real happy that it actually fell right within the guidelines of the promotional funds. 850 to 1,000 is the participant number that they're looking to bring in. And if you look at the second sheet, for every one rider that comes, there's 3.2 people would actually show up per rider. Because of BMX being an individual sport, every rider has his, basically, his pit crew or team coming. So, that's why we say when it's gonna rival what we bring in for the state bees, it really will. It might seem kind of strange to understand that a BMX race can do that, but when August 7th through 9th rolls around, you're gonna be more than amazed how many people will actually be here for this event.
Okay. Just take a look on the first page on what we're going against. You know, we're going against Las Vegas, Oklahoma, Tulsa, Oklahoma, you know, again, where else have we got here? Spokane, Woodbridge, Virginia, and then all of a sudden, there's Aberdeen, South Dakota in there. That's impressive on the BMX resume. I mean, our population isn't close to any of these cities, and we're pretty proud and pretty excited what, how they were impressed with our community. And it's with help from our community that we're able to do this. So, again, thank you, and we appreciate the help that you've given us, and hopefully, we can bring this event back and forth to the community, so.
Sounds great. And so, my understanding is that we cannot vote on anything here tonight, but we can discuss it, and we can place a vote on a future meeting in terms of perhaps some extra money that would be on the promotional funds for yet this year, or maybe future years, as you suggested. I'm going to see if anyone has any questions for these gentlemen.
Okay. I was gonna offer a suggestion. If there's a general support among the council, if you and Carl and I, two weeks, and we come back with a recommendation that you could vote on.
Sounds good. Councilman Bunsonus has a question.
So, I think you provided an amount that the promotion fund has in reserve?
Yes.
And what was that dollar amount?
$49,000.
So, there are funds available to do this?
Yeah, you could do that, or you could do a combo, where you could take $10,000 and, you know, leave $39,000 and give them additional $10,000 for 2021. Split it up, I mean.
And all you're asking for is 20,000?
Yeah, 20, separately from the...
Yep.
Yeah.
But like you say, when you sat there and I look at these names on here, I mean, you have Nashville, Tennessee, Las Vegas, Spokane, Washington, Tulsa, Oklahoma. I mean, these are sometimes cities that are 10 times bigger than what we are, if not more.
It's a big feather in our cap. Looking at your Page 3, you have kind of broken down of the event impact summary. And the two I'd like to point out is lodging and food and beverage. The combination of those two is $422,961. So, I would say this would probably replenish a portion at least of what they're asking for.
So, yeah, one more question. Kyle, do you have any other ideas that you're working on that can be as successful as this one? Man, congratulations, because you've been a one-man show for a very long time.
And yes and no. I mean, I've had support behind the scenes, but I guess you could call it somewhat of a mission, but for years, I was like, I just wanted to prove to the city that this is an asset to Aberdeen to have. And by having this event, I hope everyone understands that it's more than an asset, but it is bringing in, it can bring in big-time dollars to our community, without a doubt.
So, you're saying, excuse me, that every other year is possible for the nationals?
We put in a bid for this event every year, and there are some cities that are so successful, they just pretty much by default will get it every single year. An example, though, for like Minnesota, Minnesota's actually shared their national with Wisconsin off and on for the last several years, which is kind of why we wanted to wow them when we're here. The nice thing is, we kind of fit a hole in the national schedule as far as on the map. This particular area was somewhat in need of one. We've always been, for Minnesota, North Dakota, South Dakota, this area, to be on the national circuit, there was way more traveling than a lot of the neighboring states. Because, I mean, if you look at the list, like, you know, like Las Vegas has two of them, California's got a couple. It's a lot easier for them. So, we know that the attendance, they claim 850, and it could be quite a bit higher. I mean, it could be as high as 1,200, 1,300. We don't know, since it's our first year hosting it, but the idea is to get it every single year. But even if it is a bi-yearly thing, even at that, I mean, that's still amazing for, you know, like Mr. Rux said, I mean, if you look at the cities on here, he didn't even mention, you know, Pittsburgh and Sarasota, Florida. I mean, we're up against some major, major metropolis cities. And every time I look at the list, it's amazing, you know, Aberdeen, South Dakota is now in the same conversation as Las Vegas, Nevada. It's just kind of strange.
Like your efforts.
Well, thank you both, gentlemen. I appreciate your efforts on the matter, and it sounds like in two weeks, we'll probably have some material for actually let the ground, hit the ground running in terms of voting. So, pay attention to these documents as they come forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
Next, we've got a second open forum. Park Track and Forestry Director Mark Coven and Helms Engineering is here to present the softball complex project layout and projected construction budget. So...
See, Mark doesn't have his hat on.
It's in the truck. Well, thank you. Tonight, I'm here to talk to you about our softball complex that we've been working on for years to try to update this complex, our complexes. Most of our communities in the state have done this. They've updated their complexes, and, you know, just for the growing changes of our game, our safety, playability, accessibility for the fans to watch. So, back in 2013, I'll take you back a few years, we contracted with Stockwell Engineering out of Sioux Falls to come into Aberdeen and do an assessment of our leagues, do assessment of our complexes, kind of show, to see where we had some shortfalls. We had lost state tournaments. We had had a state tournament in a number of years come into Aberdeen, and so they were hired to do that. And what they found, of course, is that, you know, we're responsible for the maintenance and upkeep of those four softball complexes on the south complex, which is Mox and Crick, and the four up north at Players' Field. The softball complexes are utilized by our softball leagues, both men and the women. They pay a fee to play on those fields to offset their costs. They also contribute by having an improvement fee paid each, by each player, and we've done that since for a number of years. And those funds then have been matched by the city, and then they have been put into a gift fund to help eventually, we knew we'd have to build complexes. And so, again, Mox and Crick is primarily used by our youth leagues in the day with men, with the boys and the girls. And then in the evenings, we have games down there with the adults. It is our biggest field, so the adults, 12-inch men will play down there as well. And so, we have them down there. And up north at Players' Field, that hosts our youth leagues. In the spring, Aberdeen Hardball has their youth down, youth up there. Their Teeners and Schmitty's will eventually become Teeners and Schmitty's. It's been a very successful league up there. They've had a number of players in there playing on those fields as well. Northern State has used our fields. That'll be changing, because obviously, Northern is building its own softball complex, or softball field on campus. So, they will leave us, but they have in the past used south complexes as their home for their women's softball. So, and again, when Stockwell came here, they visited our fields, and there were, again, numerous deficiencies, obviously, out there, and mostly came into the field dimensions. Our south complex, our deepest field there is at 290 feet from home plate. The standards are at 300 feet. Many of the balls at Mox and Crick are either flying into the crick, or they're hitting the homes on the east side. We did put up some fencing there to try to stop some of that, but they're still being able to sail that. The lighting systems are over 30 years old. They were put in there back in the early 70s. Our concession stands are small. They're inadequate. Our bathrooms are basically unaccessible for handicapped and don't meet the current standards. Significant drainage problems at the south complex as well. And we don't offer really any green space down there. We pretty much have sucked up all of the land that's down there. There isn't any area for the players to warm up. The safety zones aren't there, so foul balls will fly into other fields from time to time as well. And so, just a lot of different issues there. The north complex has similar issues. There, again, our dimensions from home plate are quite a bit shorter. They're at 235 feet. Again, the irrigation system was installed, I actually installed that irrigation system in 1979, so I know what old that is. And the restroom concession stand areas are, again, inadequate. They've been there since the early 70s. That complex was built in 1974. And the lighting as well, we did improve the lighting in there a number of years ago. We placed the incandescent bulbs with metal halide, but that was done in the late 80s. And those lights are showing their wear and tear as well. And there is no green space available there as well for people. Parking is somewhat inadequate for tournaments when they're held up there. And so, just a lot of those things, over the years, we've put a lot of money into the fields with the help of the softball people, but some of these changes now are significant, where we're just not able to fund them with the monies that we have. So, Stockwell came, and they came with a number, and they said after they went through it all, it was $12 million to bring our fields up to where they needed to be to meet those standards. Obviously, we worked with them, and they went into a phase situation where we would go into three different phases, hopefully, eventually, during time to improve our fields. Phase 1 is why we're here tonight. And Phase 1 was to construct four fields up at the, what is the old Swisher Football Field and Track Field. That was the initial phase that came into play in there, and then that would not impact Players' Field that exists now. We would be able to construct those four fields and still maintain the eight fields that we have. Phase 2, which is not part of what we're talking about here tonight either, but Phase 2 was to take the current Players' Field and really start over, removing fences and lights and buildings, and constructing three more fields up there. So, we would have a total of seven fields on the north complex, and therefore, that would become our adult complex. All of the adult games would move into the north complex eventually, and hopefully, that would take care of that. And then Phase 3 was to move to the south complex. And down there, we would have another do-over, but we would shorten the fields there. We would put in new lights, new facilities, and that then would become our youth fields. We would play youth baseball, youth softball down there, and there might be some leagues that would actually play down there, possibly with the shortened fields. But that would then become our field that we would have for our youth leagues as well. So, they would not be at the north complex. It is hoped that down the road, as, you know, in 2025, as the revenue bonds for the Aquatic Center are required, that some of that money might be placed towards helping us with Phase 2 and Phase 3 in the softball development. But, we're here tonight because we approached the council about the possibility of using the retired bonds from the ARC to fund our Phase 1. Those bonds would bring in about $3.2, $3.3 million. We visited with City Manager Ladner about the possibility of adding another 50,000 out of our capital outlay money, to take that money up to about 4.4 million. The Softball Association has about 200,000 in reserves. The estimates from Helms, and they were here tonight, and they will speak to those, are about at 4.9 million. And so, there, obviously, there is that shortage that's in there. We're hoping that through the budget, through the bidding process, that some of those savings will be there, that their estimates are high. We're also visiting with softball to help us with the gapping that we are there. I think they also realize the need here, and so I think they're willing to maybe come to the table as well. We're also looking at eventually launching Android Drive to do some naming rights onto the complex and try to get that accomplished as well. That will come in time here. We've also cut some money out of there already, some of the stuff that we will do as a department in kind. When they came to us with those estimates, there's some things in there that our department's very capable of doing, and we're gonna do that as in kind. And so, I think we'll be able to take another 150,000 out of those numbers there alone, just from the fact of things that we can do to help them through that process and try to get this accomplished. We realized the cutting from our capital outlay budget meant that something had to be taken out. And so, we did make that adjustment. We removed 25,000 out of there for monies that was placed to re, to put switches in at the south complex on our lights. I don't want to get too complicated, but those switches are over 40 years old. We lost one of the switches two years ago, and so we crosswired it onto another switch. Eventually, those are gonna have to be replaced. We know that. We own those switches. The same thing's true up north. We're just hoping we can get by another year with that. Plus, another 25 was taken out of what is the Wiley Park irrigation money, that we are trying to save money up to replace the old irrigation system at the park at Wiley that was installed in the early 90s. So, we're hoping to get that done as well. So, again, we're just, we know that we're up against a timeline here, because regardless of what happens, we know the fields have to rest for a year, just for the grass to grow and do some of those things. So, the earliest we would see play on these fields, if we are fortunate enough to start and break ground in May, would be probably in the fall of 2021 or the spring of 2022, just depending on how the grass would grow and come into play. So, I know softball is really anxious to get this going. They have played on, we haven't seen a state tournament come into Aberdeen in probably over 12 years. And we won't see a state tournament on our fields. They just do not meet the regulations that they want to have. We have fallen behind the ball on this one, and we just feel we need to catch up here. So, I'm willing to answer any questions you might have on that, on that end of it. If not, Bob is here from Helms, and I think Lucas is sitting back there, too. They have done the primary design. We contracted with them in December to take a look at Stockwell's design and to tweak it if they needed, but we really wanted them to do a cost analysis of what was there, so we could kind of update those costs from what Stockwell had given us back in 13. They did all of that. We worked through a softball steering committee that was composed of people from the softball and city, and it was about 12 of us that sat down and looked through this plan and studied it and read through the cost estimates. Park Board approved the redesign. At its January meeting, there was very minor tweaks done to it. So, we're pretty confident that we have the design that we want, and that we, that the softball is very comfortable with. We've had numerous meetings on this, so hopeful that'll be done. And so, I'll turn it over to Helms a little bit here. They can take you through. I gave you some handouts that kind of showed the layout of the fields, the four fields that are gonna be built, hopefully, up north there as well. So, I'll turn it over to Bob unless somebody has some questions here for me.
Sure. Councilman Reif.
Real quick, I just want to make sure I have the numbers correct here, Mark. So, 4.9 was the actual bid, and you think there's 150,000 or so that you can take off the 4.9?
That's not a bid, yeah. That's the estimate.
Estimate?
Yeah. The estimates are at 4.9. So, we've actually, we've actually, as we went through their listing of their cost analysis, we picked out those things that we can do as a department. And those would be, they had some things in there, too, that we feel we can delay as well. And there will be bid packages that we will put together on this. So, we are not going to approve any of the bids that we don't have money for, obviously. So, we'll do numerous, and they'll talk about this. There'll be numerous bid packages that we will have in there, so we can kind of pick and choose for the money that we have available to us when we open bids and what we have to pay for, so.
So, the 4.9 minus the 150 on estimate would be 4.75?
Yep.
And then the bond would be 4.4?
Right.
And then with another, is there another 200 available from the softball?
Yes.
So, that takes that to 4.6, so we're short about 150-ish?
Yeah, ish.
Okay.
We'll see how bids come in. You know, again, we're dealing with estimates here, and we'll have to see how our bidding goes, so.
Councilman Bunsonus has a question.
So, Lynn provided us some numbers.
Yep.
And that shows a difference of 487,000 with a reserve and softball contribution of 200,000 already.
Yep.
And so, you're saying they have another 200,000 to give?
No.
Okay.
He's talking, that 200,000 is what we have right now in the gift fund and money that we have saved.
So, that 487,000 does not include what you can do in kind?
No, that would, we would probably subtract from that in kind off that 4.7.
Okay.
I brought it down about 3.50.
Okay.
Schedule.
Okay, thank you.
And so, the total of $4.9 million, and that basically fits nicely into the $12 million estimate overall for the total project, or has that entire thing been driven up?
I think Stockwell's estimate back in 213 was 4.1, 4.4 million was their estimate when we did the work with them. It all, obviously, that's six years ago.
Sure.
Those numbers have come up. So, each one of the phases was functioning in or around that $4 million. The most, the next two phases, obviously, when you start the complexes over, tear them down, they're gonna be in that, well, I know they'll be in that $4 million range.
Sure.
Just out of curiosity, what do you think the naming rights will bring?
Oh, it's hard to tell. I mean, Watertown was pretty successful in their naming rights. You know, they started it after they built the complex, and they went after the money then. And I think they raised, and Bob would be more familiar with it, but I think they raised 500,000 from Premier Banks was their primary sponsor. And we're gonna have sponsors on scoreboards, too. I mean, that, the scoreboard money is part of that money that we talked about. Those would be pretty simple to sell off. We've been able to find sponsorships for that as well. But it's just hard to tell when we get in here. We worked with a firm out of, and sort of Watertown out of Sioux Falls. We'll see how that goes, whether that's where we go or not. We've done some negotiating with them and talking to them, but there's some more negotiating to do on that one for their percentages, so. I really don't know. They talk like, you know, we can raise 500 to 1 million, but we'll see.
So, Mark, your anticipation is four new fields would begin to bring things like the state softball tournament to town?
Yep. Yep, that is our hope. And I think softball, a couple of softball execs are here tonight. I think one of them would testify that we would get a state tournament if we get a new complex. So, we would start in, we would get back into that loop again where they...
I just wanted to make sure we weren't like the Phase 2 or Phase 3, waiting for those type of things. So, Bob, did you have something to contribute as well?
Yeah, I got some pictures to kind of update you guys with.
Great.
I do have a question. I'm looking at the rendering and noticing the bleachers, five-row, 10-row. What is the total capacity for all four fields combined?
Okay, what we did was, we removed the five-row bleachers, and we're down to around 700 is our capacity right now, is what we listed as. So, that's one of the savings we'll put into the complexes, that we'll probably just go with the bigger bleachers behind the fields. And when the day comes, if we've got to do a state tournament and we need more seating, we have within our system five or six or seven of those five-row bleachers that we haul around all the time. So, we just didn't see any sense of putting those in there. So, 700 was the number that we came up with for seating.
Thank you. Oh, Mr. Rux.
Question for Lynn. When you bring the ordinance to us, are you just including the 4.469, or will it be for the total project?
I'm bringing it just for the bond amount.
Just for the bond amount?
Right.
So, this is a question for you, Mark. Right now, you're 487 minus 150 in kind. What happens if it comes over but, or over projection, because it can go that way, too? And then, how do you get a project started when you're short $350,000?
Yeah, excellent question. You know, what will happen is because of the bid packages that we'll have in there, and we'll have to make, if it comes too high, or it gets into that type of thing, we'll have to make some tough decisions on what gets built and what doesn't get built. But we will build a complex that will be usable, okay? And we, you know, that'll happen. We have some things in the makings with softball. I think they realize also that there may be a gap there. We've come to a plate with our 50,000. They may have to find a way to fund that gap. And that's our hope, that we can work closely with them to help do that. But if not, you know, I think Bob is gonna talk about some alternates and some bids that are gonna be taken that would allow us to, if we had to, to make those cuts to get us into budget, okay? We're not obviously gonna be able to spend money we don't have.
And of course, I'm glad that, you know, they have been, the Softball Association has been saving up for stuff like this. There is a little bit of money. Just one comment, though, is that when we built... comment, though, is that when we built the library on an 8 million dollar project, we made them fundraise a little over 2 million. And so, that's about a fourth, and this would be considerably less than that. But, I am glad that they did step up with the, the savings that they've had to stick into this. And hopefully, like I say, they can maybe come up with some other ways to, to, to fund this, because like I say, this is, you're, you're still short.
Yep, and we realize that. But, until we go to bid, until we actually see what those numbers are out there, it's really kind of hard. We're shooting at some things here, so.
Yep.
What, what do you need to get naming rights? I mean, funding for naming rights? Do you need a commitment from city council to get, get somebody to throw their name into it, or?
I might, Ron actually did some negotiating on that, so I might let him kind of comment on that.
Are you, Mark, are you talking about to procure someone to assist us in doing the naming rights, or are you talking?
Someone to put us, put up some money to get their name on the field.
How to get it going? Well, I, maybe I can't really speak to that as much as, as the notion that you'd probably have more success trying to get people to come in and, and offer to pay those when they can see something. And so, I think that's the idea. There had been discussion about putting together, entering into a consultant agreement on the front end, but we've kind of come to the, to the conclusion that that's likely not going to be as successful as something that would work out after they can see what's out there.
Don't, don't we have an ordinance that talks about naming rights, or doesn't Parks and Rec have a policy?
They have a policy, yes, we do. They have a policy in, in naming rights as well.
Okay.
What can be, what we can use for naming rights. And, I guess, we worked with the firm out of Sioux Falls. They've, they've done it, they're working with numerous communities to go out and get naming rights. And, you know, again, you pay for that service, obviously, a percentage of the money they raise, but they have been pretty successful in Sioux Falls, Brandon, Watertown. I mean, they've, they've been pretty successful in those communities to be able to raise some funds. It's just negotiating the contract with them and getting to where we, where it's advantageous for both of us, so. But, we certainly are going to explore that deeply. That's definitely what we want to be doing. So, I just don't think the timing is right, right now. After visiting with Watertown and stuff, they waited till the product was out of the ground, and then went after the naming rights, so. Okay.
It's all you, Bob. Thank you.
Okay. The picture you're looking at in front of you there, north is to the left. So, if you see the fields up there in the upper left corner, you can see, Mark mentioned that we're not going to get into the fields that are existing up there. You can kind of see those. We are going to get into the parking lot a little bit with the one field that's there. And we get really close to that walkway by the baseball fields. If you're familiar with what I call the secondary baseball field, or the, kind of the teener field, there's a walkway there that we're going to get fairly close to and tie into, actually, so. But, we are going to take a lot of alternate bids to give flexibility. If you look at the walkways clear around that, which would be on the top, the east side there, they're kind of a darker color. Those will be alternate bids. They can go in later if need be. Same with the one coming in from the west, kind of on the bottom there. That can be an alternate bid, but we really do need to get the one, the main one from the parking lot to the concession area, so we can get deliveries and have our main area accessible. We are, as far as tweaks that we've kind of made, if you're familiar with the original concept, we did kind of reduce some of the concrete, although we did, at the same time, we widened in between the fields to give a little more room for warmups, a little more green area for people to congregate. And if you notice, by first base, there is a shade structure shown, which would be kind of a, a canopy with a cover. Those are also probably going to be alternate bids. The batting cages is another thing that we tweaked a little bit. Those were shown in the original conceptual, kind of on the west side in the middle of the two fields, and we just thought that, you know, people on weeknights or weekends, you know, maybe not even during softball, but before softball starts or something, may want to bring family out and do some batting cage work, and why go all the way into the middle of the field thing? Pull up and just get out and hit. So, we tried to do some things to make it more user-friendly as well. So, that's kind of what the crux of the tweaks that we made, and we will, like I say, we're going to try to keep everything as flexible as we can. So, when we do get bids, we'll have unit prices on everything, so we can pick and choose. At that time, we'll know exactly what the costs are.
So, anyone have any questions for Bob?
There is another. If you go to the next one.
Next one.
This is kind of the phase two, just kind of give you a feel for it. The four fields turn into three, and you can kind of see how they, the four existing fields turn into three new fields, and you can kind of see how that kind of ties into the whole grand scheme of things. But, again, this one does not include the phase two. It's just kind of to give you a feel for it.
And again, just so you know, I mean, as we do the alternate bids, I mean, if we don't build the shade structure with now, we'll have the ability to do it later. It's not like it's going to be eliminated from the plan. I mean, there would be the ability to go in, if funds become available, to finish up areas that we probably didn't get done before, so.
Bob, the construction costs, well, are you, what's your position on what you have on, on the paper? Are you thinking there's some room there, or are you?
Well, we hope so. I mean, we, we try to talk to the local contractors, and we're trying to get it bid as early as we can. We got a goal in, in our schedule of trying to bid it, advertise in March until get a bid in April. And we know the sooner we can do that, the better bids will get. But, we do need to get through some of the funding hoops, too, with the timing of the ordinances and stuff, too, so. But, we are, I mean, we're diligently working on the design. Probably one other tweak that we had to make on the restroom concessions, it's actually turned the other way, so that we can miss some utilities that are underground going through there. And we've met with Robin, and there's a water line that we're going to take an alternate bid on as well, because it's AC water line, and they've done some work in the previous years, and rather than have a problem, we may see what the costs are to put PVC in while we're doing things. And this, right, the best thing about the new fields that you're really going to notice, I think, when they're done, is we're going to mound them up. So, we're going to bring in four or five foot of fill in the center, and it's going to be a mound, and water's actually going to run away. And that's kind of neat to see in Aberdeen. But, by doing that, we get two things. By building that up, it also gets us high enough where we can get underdrain under the fields. So, when it does rain on the agri line, we can get the water out of there, too, and we can get it to the storm sewer at the parking lot. So, I think you're really going to see some people that are going to like what we're doing.
Unfortunately, it won't run far, though.
No.
Sounds good. Anything else from the council?
I think quickly our schedule is, obviously, back next week with first reading of the ordinance, hopefully. I mean, we do the second reading. Our hope is to be bidding, you know, to get authorization for bid from the Parks Board in March, and hopefully, we won't award anything until we know we've passed through the ordinance, but probably awarding bids late April, and hopefully, we can start breaking ground there, making ground sometime in May, things go well. So, we'll keep you posted, keep you updated, and hopefully, it all comes together, so.
It will.
It will.
Thank you for coming in, gentlemen.
Appreciate your time.
Just as a point of clarification for the public who are interested, that first reading would be on Tuesday, February 18th, because the 17th is a holiday.
So, the, the ordinance approved 317 to 323 is really the bonding ordinance?
Yes.
Okay.
Moving along, we've got a consent calendar items A through C, possible approval of those items. Can I get a motion to make those approvals, please?
Move to approve. Second.
A motion from Remley in a second, from Lunsman. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Vote his name. Motion does carry. Move along to new business. We've been asked to move these things around just a little bit to accommodate Rich Crokel's schedule. So, Rich, if you'd move your way to the front, we can get your airport stuff out of the way first.
Thank you, Mayor. My three items were all discussed and approved at the regular airport board meeting. Item number one is to approve lease amendment number one for the airport lease number 64, which is the TSA-GSA lease. The amendment is for the government to retain the current 502, 502 square foot leased space in the passenger terminal building as office space until November 30th, 2026, for annual rent of $16,064.
Move to approve that lease.
Second.
Got a motion from Johnson in a second, from Olson. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Crokel about the lease?
Were there any other spots in the, in the terminal that you looked at?
No, there, there are no other spots available.
Okay.
We're, we're pretty well.
So, this, this spot is one of the spots that would be used by rental car, potential future rental car company, correct?
Well, Ron and I have talked about that, and we're going to, do you want to address that, Ron, or? We're, we're going to be offering two spaces in the terminal.
There are currently two, and, and we're going to offer, again, on, on proposals, the opportunity for two car companies to come in. So, we're not expand, we're not planning on expanding. Now, having said that, I want to make sure that you're aware that there is the ability for dual branding, where, where it's more than one national company at each counter. And that's, that's always available out there. So, you can have up to four, for example. Even though we have two counters, we could easily see two, four national car companies.
Was there a, obviously, Rich, you took over, but the prior administrator, I think, was looking for a third option, that there would be three rental car agencies. And so, I'm wondering what changed our position on that?
Well, this, this is actually, I think, a separate, we, we have to have space at the facility for TSA, correct?
Correct.
This is the TSA lease space.
I understand that, but if they were to go, I mean, they were, they were someplace before this particular space. They haven't been here, they haven't been in this particular space for a long time.
They, they were in this particular space, but they were forced into a smaller space, and then this space was given back to them.
Okay.
It's kind of convoluted.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I understand that this is, you know, for this particular space, but looking forward, this will, could create some issues with rental car companies also that I, you know, I would be addressing. So, I'm just trying to get a feel for, you know, the smaller space doesn't work for them anymore?
Well, the smaller space actually never did work for them.
And we have no other space in the terminal?
There is no other space.
So, we took, we, we built the airport prior to TSA being a popular organization?
Correct.
Okay.
And we've extensively remodeled, and we're finding that that still isn't enough. So, I may be visiting you in the future to remodel. That's another subject, though.
Okay. Well, that's a better problem to have than closing the airport down.
It is, much better.
But, I, I see where Dave's going at. I know what, we have probably three interested parties for two spots, and I'm glad to see the dual branding. It may work, but, and then one of them is in another building, off.
Off terminal.
Off terminal.
On property.
On property.
That would make, there could be, there would be four people, four companies that would be interested, if you're considering the off, off terminal business. So, this will potentially be something that one of the existing car companies will lose their spot. And that's a local company that potentially could, that's, that's where I'm, my concern comes in. And so.
Assuming that all local companies are going to bid.
Assuming all local companies will bid, correct. That's my assumption.
Does the footprint of the TSA's rented space, as you said, it's expanded from where it was, but is the location within the airport in the same spot?
The location, the location is the same as it was prior to being forced into the smaller space.
But roughly in the western part of the, of the airport?
It'd be, yeah, it'd be the southeast corner of the terminal.
Oh.
So, I guess I want to try to make sure we're being clear. At some point, TSA, I want to say in the last four years, TSA was kind of forced to shrink. Some, some decision by GSA at a higher level forced them to take a smaller space. Well, they were quick, and that's when that look, space came open, that there was a potential third rental car was looking at coming in. But, it became very clear very quickly that that was not workable for TSA.
Correct.
So, they went back to their original space, the 502 square feet that we're talking about here. And that's where, that's what we're trying to, to extend and renew right now.
Does anyone have any other questions for Mr. Crokel as it relates to this lease? Otherwise, I will ask for a motion for that lease amendment. I think you have it.
Yeah, we have one.
Yeah, we have one.
And a second. Sorry about that. Conversation went a little longer than I was expecting. Any other discussion on the matter? Otherwise, Carl, could you give me a roll call vote, please? Councilmember Remley.
Aye.
Lunsman.
Aye.
Reif.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Bunson.
Aye.
Olson.
Aye.
Rux.
Aye.
Mayor Shawman. Aye, motion does carry. Next, we've got the payment request for work on airport projects, payment 18 for the master plan layout for Helms and Associates, and payment 16 for the taxiway C. Helms and Associates, the amounts of $13,782.09, $3,088.46. Possible approval and authorize for the city manager to sign payment requests of those amounts to Helms and Associates. Rich, what can you tell us about that?
Yep, this is for the master plan ALP project. And moving forward, we've got a public meeting scheduled February 25th across the street, 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM, and we're doing a mailout next week, and we've got it advertised also on channel nine, I think it is, the public channel. So, see if we can get some public input on, on public ideas of where the airport should look like in 20 years. But, yeah, as you can see, airport master plan, 79.5% complete. The ALP is 64% complete, and the aerial approach survey is 80% complete.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to make those payment requests? Move to approve both.
Second.
A motion from Johnson and a second from Rux. Does anyone have any questions as it relates to either of these payments, or else? Carl, give me a roll call vote, please. Councilmember Rux.
Aye.
Olson.
Aye.
Bunson.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Reif.
Aye.
Lunsman.
Aye.
Remley.
Aye.
Mayor Shawman. Aye, motion does carry. Rich, thank you for coming in and explaining those things to us. We'll move along to new business item A, ordinance 200202, ordinance approving issuance and provisions for repayment of funding bonds, series 2020 for the clean water SRF loans, CW 1A, CW 2, CW 1 NPS, and CW 3. Possible first reading of the ordinance. Carl, what can you tell us about, though?
Thank you, Mayor. This is a refinancing that I've been working with and talking to Lynn about. He probably is a little bored of it by now, but we've been doing it for some months, because there's quite a few moving parts. One of the things I would like to point out in the bond ordinance is the not to exceed verbiage. Right now, the principal amount is at just over $9.7 million. But, we are working with Wells Fargo and DENR to determine just what that refinancing amount will be. There are two things that come into play. One is the 17.34% of our current outstanding principal that would have to be issued in a taxable form. And because it's taxable, interest taxable, then it would be at a higher interest rate to make it more attractive to purchasers. That would eliminate any savings in, in that area. So, my proposal is to use existing cash balances to pay down that portion, approximately $1.7 million, that we would just pay DENR that Um, the second component is actually, uh, clean water number three, uh, is currently a sales tax revenue bond rather than a project revenue bond. And in discussions on a conference call today with Todd Meyer Henry, with, uh, Meyer Henry and Sergeant Law Firm that is our bond counsel and the bond counsel with Wells Fargo that is working with this, we determined that it would be much easier if we would just keep that particular issuance as a revolving loan with D E N R. Get that out of the mix. It would be cleaner and simpler. We wouldn't have to do as much manipulation in the bond ordinance. Let's see, three. Here we are. Um, for savings on this, I, I put four hundred and twenty thousand. I'm not sure what I was thinking there. I overshot that number, uh, because we will have to pay issuance costs out of that. We'll have to pay, um, for our bond counsel. Um, I'm not sure what that number will be, but it won't be four hundred and twenty thousand. I'll, I'll have to be honest with you at that, with that number. But, uh, again, in the conference call, talking to the credit people with Wells Fargo, they hope that we can get at least a three percent net present value savings, which is a number that Lynn has kind of hung his hat on as far as a minimum that we should try and get for savings. And I think we'll be able to achieve that with some other work that we're going to do with Wells Fargo. Um, there are surcharge amounts, if you recall, on the sewer bills right now to identify the revenue that is available to make that annual payment. Um, I think we'll have to tweak that a little bit, uh, in talking with the two bond counsel people. Uh, the one said we can leave it as it is and one says we should lump it all into one. Uh, I'll let the attorneys badger that out and see just where we're going to go with that. But if we do need to do that, I'll bring in ordinance to make that change to our existing ordinance in the future. And the other thing I wanted to point out is that, again, uh, this is a reissuance, so it does not, and because we're using project revenues, does not count towards our debt limit calculations that we do every year.
Councilman Bunsonis.
So the, uh, surcharge changes are not affecting the amounts of the surcharges, just whether you're going to combine the two together?
Combine them. Um, it may increase it a little bit. And the reason being is that right now the Department of Environment and Natural Resources requires a hundred and ten percent coverage. In other words, if we have a million dollar annual payment, we have to have a hundred and ten million dollars coming in as project revenue through the surcharge. Um, Wells Fargo is kind of leaning towards a hundred and fifteen percent. Now, because we are paying down a portion of the existing debt, I'm not sure just what that number will be until we get the amortization, proposed amortization schedule from Wells Fargo.
And, uh, these are the bonds for the water treatment plant and the sewage treatment plant or just sewage?
Just wastewater.
Just wastewater.
But, yeah, uh, one A and two are for the improvements that we did at wastewater. And one N P S, non-point source, is some of the work that we did actually on projects along the Elm River to make sure that it's clean water that we're getting through the Elm River. Isn't that right, Robin? Non-point source is what points me towards that.
So what does three percent net present value come to on this?
It, again, that would depend on the actual amount when we're doing the reissuance, uh, the refinancing.
Well, we know it's not over four hundred and twenty thousand.
We know it's not over four hundred and twenty thousand, but my.
It's greater than zero.
It's greater than zero. It's, it's in that range. You nailed it, David.
Could you give me a little better number than that?
As soon as I have a good feel with that, I will forward that on to you, but.
Typical accountant. Don't, don't want to give any estimates.
It won't be zero, so anywhere between five dollars and four hundred and twenty thousand.
But, uh, as Lynn has said, um, we want to make sure that we get at least that much of a savings, uh, otherwise it's not worth it.
Any other questions on, otherwise I'll take a motion for.
Moved.
Second.
Motion from Bunsonis and a second from Rux. Um, Carl, why don't you give me a roll call vote on that, please?
Councilmember Remley.
Aye.
Lunsman.
Aye.
Rife.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Bunsonis.
Aye.
Olson.
Aye.
Rux.
Aye.
Mayor Shawman.
Aye, motion does carry. Next, we've got a resolution approving crosswalk art agreement with the Aberdeen Downtown Association. Possible approval of resolution number twenty oh two oh one R, authorizing the city manager to enter into a crosswalk art agreement with the Aberdeen Downtown Association for installation, maintenance and removal of the art in the downtown core area. And Shelley, are you here to speak with us on that? Perfect. Would you find your way to the podium?
Absolutely. I'd like to invite Brody and Carly to join me if they would. Um, this is kind of a labor of love for several of us, so feel free to. I was just. So, um, we brought this last May, um, if you recall, um, and I, I want to thank Lynn and, and Ron and Robin for meeting with me a couple of different times with regard to this. And, and, um, what we're looking to do is basically have a crosswalk, um, art program, um, that would, we feel is going to be a destination then for individuals. We had it, um, in some streetscape budget a long time ago, I guess, way before me, for, um, statues and, um, have some sort of art walk, some sort of statue walk like they have in, in other major cities. And we just haven't been able to get to that point, to be able to have enough fundraising to, to make that happen. And, um, so, um, Brody and, um, Carly, both being downtown, um, businesses, Carly's also on our Downtown Association and Bid Board, um, have a huge passion for this and they really kind of went to town and, and put it together. Um, they did a lot of work on it. I do want to thank, um, Lynn and Ron as well for, for their work in drawing this resolution together and, and getting all the stipulations behind it so that it could be a working document that, that works for all of us. Um, but then Carly and Brody put together an application that will, um, has, is, has not gone out yet, but, um, upon approval, we'd like to get out to the school systems, um, as well as the two universities and to any other, um, artists in town where they can put together a, um, rendering of what they may place in, um, a crosswalk. And we obviously have the stipulations and approval, um, with Robin's input as well, um, regarding the paint that they can use and, and things that are, um, able to be done. Um, and then, um, there's going to be awarded basically on some finalists. There's going to be, um, sponsorships, obviously, that we need to go out and get for this, so it would not be of any cost to the city. Um, but we're, feel really passionately about it, something that we feel is going to not only showcase the artists that are in town, but also be a continued change in downtown Aberdeen so that we can continue to bring people down. And it would be a destination for them to want to come every summer and, and see what, see what happens. Um, I'm going to stop talking. And, um, if you guys have any questions or if you want to know any more of the input of it and, um, how the process is going to happen, we'd love to, we'd love to answer those.
Uh, Councilman Rux, what have you got?
Will you have, because I know that when Brody brought some pictures when he first, there was probably one I probably wasn't too thrilled about. Uh, are there any criteria that you will have in place, um, to ensure that maybe something that may be offensive to certain individuals? Okay. And I saw that in there.
Right. So, yeah, so when I first brought this to, uh, to your all, it was more of a proof of concept, right? Like, is this something that, I just give me a, give me a way, one way or another, which way we'd be leaning? Those were two concepts that we had, we had brought up. Um, I mean, we've gone far away from those at this point, uh, simplified everything down. So the main idea would be just like any, any televised contest, you have these five paint colors in this type of paint that you can use and then no, uh, traffic signals or anything that would be construed as a traffic signal. So that's not confusing, uh, no words, no alcohol, tobacco, no direct advertising, all that laid out, um, by, uh, by the great, um, document that we are kind of going with. All that is laid out very clear for the, uh, applicants here. So, uh, so no, it'll be much more streamlined down.
Uh, Councilman Bunsonis.
So, uh, C ten talks about, uh, ADA shall not permit, um, crosswalk art which promotes tobacco, alcohol and drug use or offends community standards of decency. I see that you put in your application, um, three of the four of those. Are you just assuming that, um, the, uh, offensive comment or, uh, offensive art would not be something that someone would, um, tackle?
Yeah, so, um, again, I'm Carly and I went to school for art education, so this is near, dear to my heart. I also have a background in dealing with different, um, you know, application processes. So part of this is there's only nine that are going to be selected at the high school level, the college level, and then the, um, you know, professional level. So anything that does not refit in the criteria, they won't be selected to be on that board, okay? And so, you know, of those that get actually painted on the streetscape, they have very strong criteria. Um, so we're not neglecting that. We just know the standards are too high to even get them to be on the crosswalk. Um, and then of the crosswalks, the twenty-eight crosswalks that are going to be painted, um, one from each category is going to win. And so all those crosswalks are going to go to a citywide vote, get the whole city involved and have everybody involved saying that we believe that this one is the best for the year. So, if that answers your question.
Councilman Johnson.
I'm not, I'm not sure it does because it, you, you highlight three of the four in, and I'm just wondering.
So do you need me to add that in there?
Well, I'm wondering if.
It's a very simple change.
Right, right. I just want to make it clear to people, you know, I, I remember, um, uh, the, when I was in high school that, uh, we put out the design of the yearbook to individual art students. And lo and behold, um, something slips by and, you know, everyone gets a chuckle of what the person has added to the picture. And I just want to make it clear to people that this is our standard.
And that's why we've done all the work to make this, um, as clear as can be, um, but we'll make that small change to make it even more crystal clear for you.
And one wouldn't necessarily, uh, overshadow the other. We'd still be required to abide by the existing rules, right?
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, I understand that.
With the resolution and the, I mean, this document is, this is the standing document. Application process, you know, it's, what we're trying to do is make sure that we're not, um, strangling creativity. I don't know what words to, I don't know. I just, we don't want to put a stronghold on that, um, but the standards that we are going to go off of and the committee is going to go off of when looking at the artwork that comes through is going to be the resolution document that's been put in place with the city. The, the application process is just, again, trying to narrow it down so it's a little bit, you know, um, not so wordy and lengthy for an applicant to be able to take a look at it and say, hey, I want to take a shot at this.
Especially a high school student. If you think, you know, you've given this to a high school student and who is maybe passionate art or loves the arts, you don't want to dismay them from being creative with, um, a lot of legal documents.
But all of these standards that are put in place with the resolution is what we're going off of when we choose something.
Who will be responsible for painting these?
The individuals.
The artists.
And that will be monitored, I'm guessing?
Yes.
Okay. Just, just getting to, you know, sneaking something in.
Yep.
Can you comment on the durability of the paint materials that are used on, uh, the type of surfaces that we have here?
Yeah, absolutely. It's the same, uh, type of paint as traffic striping paint is what we're using. It just comes in a certain number of colors. And so those would be the colors that we would use, not strain too far from what, what is given. Uh, with that, then it would have the same durability as what is already on the street. Um, the difference being that, I mean, obviously this is art and it would wear down. However, uh, we would paint this or the paintings would go up the first week in May and then would be removed after the Gypsy Day Parade in October. So, uh, we don't have to worry about what they look like come now, you know, or come, come March or May when, when the snow is gone. They'll already be removed, uh, from that point. And so it's, and that, that's a respect to the artist that it stays in a decent shape until, until it's removed. Um, but it's regular, uh, traffic striping paint, the same as that's on the streets now.
Brody, how, how do they remove this paint from the streets?
It'd be a sandblasting operation.
Got it. And, um, Ms. Sheldon had a question from the crowd. May as well pipe in while you're here.
Question or comment? I'm Betty Sheldon. I'm a local artist. Not sure. I'm interested in painting on the street, but I think it's a fabulous idea. When you were discussing, I think, the standards that you would set, that maybe they were too vague. It just made me kind of chuckle because I once was involved in a business operation where we had to come up with dress codes. And that's very nebulous and no matter how specific you get it, you know, it can really be difficult. So I don't know what your standard says, but I feel for you on that. Um, I have one question that just came to me. Is each of these, um, projects, when they're suggested to be done by an individual or could they be a group project for one section? And I don't really.
Either. And if one person feels strongly and has the vision and wants to do it, then, then we would welcome them. If that's, uh, that can be very daunting for, I, I would not be, have a strong enough vision, but it's so. If a group of people want to submit, uh, something, uh, then that is, that is very welcome as well.
I happen to be a founding member of the art club.
Well, you get everybody together and we'll get you a crosswalk.
Do you know what the colors are?
Uh, so it's red, yellow, uh, blue, white and black.
Thanks so much. Thanks for letting me speak.
You bet. Councilman Johnson has another. Can you point us to any other cities that have a similar art project?
Uh, yeah, Sisseton has done this, uh, successfully, as has Yankton, uh, so locally. Uh, the idea came to me when I was in Duluth, Minnesota, uh, two summers ago and saw it done there. So, uh, it's, I think the, the newsworthy ones, I think it's someplace in Sweden that did, uh, it looks like three D, uh, crosswalk, three D crosswalk blocks. Um, we will not be doing that, uh, but it's, it's been done, uh, many places. So we're not reinventing the wheel at all. We're just trying to bring some, uh, some more accessible as far as cost-wise and, and labor-wise, uh, art down to downtown.
Sure thing. So there's, uh, twenty-eight corners. Have you gauged enthusiasm and interest to see, or is the twenty-eight a reasonable number of participants?
Maximum.
That's maximum. So it's, it's twenty-nine, I think. Um, and that is every crosswalk on the avenue and the street from Sixth to Railroad as well as the mid-block crosswalks. So they're all slightly different shapes, um, or slightly different widths, but we, the common denominator would be about five and a half feet wide by thirty feet long.
Sounds good. Well, if no one else has any questions, why don't we take a motion to make this approval?
Move approval. Second.
A motion from Rux and a second from Olson. Any other statements before we take a vote? Otherwise, Carl, why don't you give us a roll call?
Councilmember Rux.
Aye.
Olson.
Aye.
Bunsonis.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Rife.
Aye.
Lunsman.
Aye.
Remley.
Aye.
Mayor Shawman.
Aye, motion does carry. Thanks for coming in, you guys.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Look forward to seeing some exciting new artwork downtown.
Thanks for waiting.
I look forward to coming back when Lynn have a open forum opening for the ADA to, to give our update. So I'll email you that again. Thank you.
Sounds great. Look forward to it.
You should know I asked her to wait until March because of all the incoming activities we have going on right now. I didn't think she wanted to sit here an hour or two.
Next up, we've got city manager's replacement due to retirement. So first and foremost, congratulations, Lynn.
Thank you.
Uh, possible approval to replace the city manager's position with a salary range of one hundred forty-five thousand to one hundred sixty-five thousand as well as authorize the mayor to enter a contract with the executive search firm called Hugh Life.
Move approval. Second.
Had a motion from, uh, Rux and a second from Bunsonis. Um, the group of us all met, a small group of us, uh, in terms of this agreement. And I want to read a note from H R Director Jill Moore on the topic. Selecting a city manager is one of the most important functions we will undertake together. Hugh Life is a recruitment firm that was used previously to recruit our current city manager and director. And Dr. Richard Firstman is familiar with the city of Aberdeen and its culture. I have reviewed the quotes that were previously submitted and the costs are comparable based on the scope of services. Hugh Life knows the field and works primarily with Midwestern government entities where other companies have not. So, um, I think that, uh, that does a pretty good job of summarizing the conversation that we had as a group. Does anyone have any comment to make or questions to direct at a subcommittee? Otherwise, uh, Carl, why don't you give us a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Remley.
Aye.
Lunsman.
Aye.
Rife.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Bunsonis.
Aye.
Olson.
Aye.
Rux.
Aye.
Mayor Shawman.
Aye, motion does carry.
One thing, direct them to their email because there's a survey.
Oh, yeah, great point. Um, yeah, everyone should have received an email from Lynn here, uh, earlier today with a survey that's, uh, required by the fourteenth in order to, uh, to be effectively considered. So that gives us only a few days, so please check that and respond.
Okay, uh, and I can add to that. Uh, I was on the phone with Richard today and, uh,
Okay. And I can add to that. I was on the phone with Richard today and that survey has to deal with the profile for the city manager's position. He will be coming next Tuesday and he wants to speak to the council after the city council meeting, but during the public period. And he wants to get input and give you the results of your surveys. In addition, I also have him be meeting with the department heads before the city council meeting, probably at four PM on Tuesday. So he will be here next Tuesday to assist with the process. And if you look through the email that I provided you, he has some timeframes as to estimated completion of interviews and applications. And I'll bring that along for the next meeting, too.
Fun process.
Well, it's easier the second time, like most things. Next, we've got the appointment of Bruce Kiefer to the Business Improvement District Board. Possible approval to appoint Bruce Kiefer to the Business Improvement District Two Board. I will take a motion to do that. Got a motion from Bunsonis and a second.
Second.
From Mike Olson. Does anyone have any questions or concerns about Mr. Kiefer? Otherwise, I'll just take a voice vote on that. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Bruce is approved. We'll move along to the request from the fire department to declare a nineteen eighty-nine Bobcat skid steer surplus property. Possible approval to declare the skid steer surplus property as requested by the fire department. I don't see Randy. So Carl, why don't you tell us about that? Okay. Thank you, Mayor. When the airport got approval to get two new skid steers that gave them two surplus skid steers that they were going to get rid of, actually the fire department said they would like one of them to use and the old one that they have now then will be offered. This one will be surplus and offered as a bid item for surplus. Can I?
Move approval.
Got a motion from Bunsonis and a second from Johnson to declare that surplus property. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That will carry. Next, we've got the FY twenty, section five, three three nine grant award from the South Dakota Department of Transportation for purchase of four vehicles, update to scan tool and renewal of the routing software for the ride line. Possible approval to authorize the city manager to sign the FY twenty, section five, three three nine grant award agreements from the South Dakota Department of Transportation for those amounts. Review by the city attorney. Tom is here to share some information about that.
This is just the standard process in getting the fifty-three thirty-nine grant approved. Need to have the paperwork signed and submitted back to the state DOT prior to being able to order any of this equipment. So.
Move approval. Second.
Got a motion from Bunsonis and a second from Olson on that. Do we need a roll call vote, means approval for the money? Otherwise, we'll just do a voice vote then. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Congratulations, Tom. Thanks for coming in and toughening it up with us. Next, we've got the city's approval of the bill list for February tenth, two thousand and twenty, as included in your online packets and in front of you on the screen. Can I get a motion to pay the bills?
So moved. Second.
Got a motion from Rux and a second from Remley. Carl, why don't you give us a roll call vote on that, please? Councilmember Rux?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Bunsonis?
Stain.
Johnson?
Aye.
Rife?
Aye.
Lunsman?
Aye.
Remley?
Aye.
Mayor Shawman? Aye, motion does carry. Next, we've got the city manager's report. Lynn, what have you got for us tonight?
I have no other items.
No other? Did we just take too long and we want to go home or? Okay, sounds good. Does anyone else have anything to add before we adjourn? Otherwise, I will take a motion to adjourn. Bunsonis and Olson, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay.